Call the meeting of the President and Trust, Board of Trustees to order, roll call please.
Trustee Benucci?
Here.
Trustee Fay?
Here.
Trustee Lamb?
Here.
Trustee Peck?
Here.
Trustee Rasich? Mayor Collins?
Here, if we can rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is something unusual that we have to do this evening. Mr. Fay won't be able to voice his opinion on these, on some of the items on the agenda. Or the content of saying, so. But I really want to present this to Mr. Fay. He's belonged to the Plainfield Village Board for 12 years. And he's done a wonderful job over those years. And although we'll miss him, we always want to congratulate him on retiring. And hope that whatever you choose to do, you're successful. It reads Paul Fay, Village Trustee from 2003 to 2015. In recognition, appreciation of your outstanding years of service and dedication to the Village of Plainfield. Thank you very much.
I'm not, I'm not usually short, I'm not usually short on words, but tonight I will be. Thank you very much.
Now if any of the trustees might have a exiting comment?
I'm sure they do.
I'll start at this end, Paul, jump in there before some of the others that have served with you. You know, when you make a decision to go into public service, you do it because you want to be here. And there's things that you want to look forward to and ways that you want to serve the community. And, but it, it does come with, with some sacrifices and price to it. And I will say that Paul has served the community as a village trustee for many years. He was on the township board prior to that. He is, he has been a proponent of watching over the Village of Plainfield in many ways. One of his greatest, I guess, goals is to watch out for the green space in our town, conservation of our town, a lot of the nice things that we all enjoy and you take for granted when you see things like parks and open space and that in your subdivision. And so I, I would like to wish Paul just, just all the best going forward. I know we will hear from him, we look forward to hearing from him, that's not going to stop. But honestly, it really is something to be treasured. And I hope the people of Plainfield truly realize that he has done a great service for all of us. So thank you, Paul.
A couple of comments, I wish Paul the best in the future too, but a couple of little tidbits. If you remember four years ago, Larry Ketchel at his farewell. Paul, you prepared a very nice speech. My one, it was very well done, nice roast of Larry, if you will. My one comment at that time is I'm glad I got reelected. And I'm glad I'm still reelected. So anyway, the second thing is a comment you made aside in one of the IML meetings. Comment on my very first meeting. You were sitting over there and I was sitting at this end and you said, who's that talking at that end? Nobody ever gets on the board and talks the very first night, if you remember, so. But yeah, you've done a lot of good things and appreciate your service. And it takes a lot of effort to be on the board for that many years, so thank you very much.
I've always been a man of very few words. But tonight, Mr. Fay, I just want to say that I will not use the two words that you hold dear, enclosure. Okay? But anyway, I just want to, I don't want to tease Paul. Paul has been a dedicated servant to the Village of Plainfield since 2003 officially elected, 2003, 2015, 12 years. People do not realize how much effort it is to be a trustee for that length of time. Everybody says, oh, you don't do anything. Well, Paul can testify to the fact that you do an awful lot. And he has done an awful lot. People expected him to not only lead committees, but also to formulate them, get them working, get the community moving, and he has done it in a very formidable fashion. And so I was disappointed that you did not seek reelection. I wondered why, but that's always a decision that someone has to make on their own. It'll be a loss for the Village of Plainfield not to have you on this board, but certainly we hope you do put forth your voice at any and all opportunities to criticize these other individuals. I know you would never say anything about me, but, but anyway, Paul, thank you for your service. And like I say, enclosure, best wishes for the near future. You deserve it.
Trustee Fay, it's been a very interesting experience. I have to say that agree or disagree, every decision that I've seen you make, you did with passion and you did in the best interest of the community. And you always do what you felt was right, regardless of outside pressures or other individuals with special interests tried to push you to do. So again, you've always done the right thing for the village and that's what a trustee should do. As Trustee Rasich had mentioned, a lot of individuals don't realize how much time it is to actually serve as a village trustee. It's not just every Monday night, it's not just missing Monday night football. It's serving on committees, it's volunteering different places and being expected to be at events. And Trustee Fay has been all over the community and very active. And again, I want to thank you for your service and what you've done. And something tells me we haven't seen the last of you on this board, but thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, thank you very much. One word that I heard used tonight by several of the trustees is service. And I want to congratulate the incoming trustees and remind them that first and foremost, your role is a public servant. Always remember that. Thank you.
I would just like to say, Paul, you know, and continuing with it, and it's, it seems so small to be able to get a plaque. And although it was given from the heart, it's, for all the time you've put in, you get something you hang on your wall, and I mean, it's very small tribute to you. But I must say, you've, you've went through a couple boards, changes of heads since you've been sitting over there. And some have been very interesting and colorful, and some have been just regular folk, if you will. But you've held your head high the whole time. You've done a wonderful service and I truly want to thank you as a trustee and a friend.
This would be the time for public comments. There are no public comments, so proceed with the business meeting. We're seeking a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich? Thank you, that motion carries. We're seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda to include minutes of the board meeting and executive session held on April 20th, and bills paid and bills payable report for May 4th.
So move.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve items A and B under the consent agenda. Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich? Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2015 Memorial Day Parade. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to approve the 2015 Memorial Day Parade and ceremony and the associated road closures as identified in the staff report to be held on Monday, May 25th.
So move.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, proceed with the roll.
Couple of quick comments. Last year, the temperature was pretty hot and we ended up having a couple of people. I'm sure we're going to be prepared for that again.
Absolutely, actually, the last couple of years, we've had typically band members that have been overcome by the heat. We have the Plainfield Fire and EMS that are out there with us, monitoring along with our police officers and our EMS, and we've been able to address those issues pretty quickly when they occur.
Yeah, look at your well-staffed for that. The, I noticed last year, the East High School Band did not march, but they did provide kind of a concert for the people waiting for the parade to start. Is it likely to occur again this year?
To be honest with you, I'm not sure about that. The American Legion is handling that part of the detail. I can, I can get an answer for you, but I'm just not aware right now.
I'm just curious, I mean, it worked out nicely, but that was a change from the previous years where they, everybody had marched. But it was nice because they played before things started and it helped to keep things going. The other thing is, is the monument, new monument going to be moved in time?
We, Alan and I can better speak to that issue. We do have engineering plans that were received last Friday, I want to say, or, yeah, Friday. Engineering is finishing up their review of those items. It's likely that they could possibly have the foundation installed before labor, before Memorial Day. However, there's a 28-day cure for the concrete and the like before they can place the unit. So the unit itself won't, won't be there. We, we're still work, working through those particular details. And Alan might have more than I do at this point, but I think that that's what I, if I'm correct, yes.
Oh, next year, anyway. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? The motion was made and seconded to approve the 2015 Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony and associated roads, road closures. Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich? Thank you, that motion carries.
I move, we adjourn CNAD.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich? Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Now we will have the oath of office for the newly elected officials. And we're very fortunate this evening to have a individual who was recently elected to Circuit Judge, Daniel Rippey. He spent three and a half years on the board. And he graciously said that he would come this evening and swear the individuals in. Any of those after the swearing or during the swearing you wish to take pictures, by all means, come as close as you need to take. Judge?
Yeah, we'll do them one at a time.
Okay. Yeah, you should do them one at a time.
Raise your hand. I, state your name.
I, Edward O'Rourke.
Having been elected to?
Having been elected to?
The office of the Village of Trustee?
The office of the Village of Trustee.
In the Village of Plainfield?
In the Village of Plainfield.
In Will and Kendall Counties, Illinois?
In Will and Kendall County, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America?
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully, faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Village Trustee?
Of the office of Village Trustee.
In the Village of Plainfield?
In the Village of Plainfield.
Will and Kendall Counties, Illinois?
Will and Kendall County, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, trustee.
Thank you.
I, state your name.
I, Brian Wojkowski.
Having been elected to?
Having been elected to.
The office of Village Trustee?
The office of Village Trustee.
In the Village of Plainfield?
In the Village of Plainfield.
In Will and Kendall Counties, Illinois?
In Will and Kendall Counties, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
Of the office of Village Trustee?
Of the office of Village Trustee?
In the Village of Plainfield?
In the Village of Plainfield.
Will and Kendall Counties, Illinois?
Will and Kendall Counties, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, trustee.
Thank you, sir.
I, state your name.
I, Bill Lamb.
Having been elected to?
Having been elected to.
The office of Village Trustee?
The office of Village Trustee.
In the Village of Plainfield?
In the Village of Plainfield.
In Will and Kendall Counties, Illinois?
In Will and Kendall Counties, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America?
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Village Trustee?
The office of Village Trustee.
In the Village of Plainfield?
In the Village of Plainfield.
Will and Kendall Counties, Illinois?
Will and Kendall Counties, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's going to be hard, Paul, sorry.
There is refreshments out in lobby, we'll take a break. And please join us out there. And I also want to thank Judge Rippey for taking a time out and coming in to do this swearing in. Call to order, roll call.
Trustee Benucci?
Here.
Trustee Lamb?
Here.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Here.
Trustee Peck?
Here.
Trustee Rasich?
Here.
Trustee Wojkowski?
Here.
Mayor Collins?
Here. No, there's no. I know. Have a couple proclamations. Poppy Day proclamation, whereas America is the land of the free, preserved and protected willingly by freely, by citizen soldiers. Whereas millions have to answer the call to arms have died in the field of battle. Whereas a nation at peace must be reminded the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war. Whereas the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice of the lives of all wars. And whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of this debt through the distribution of memorial flower. Now therefore, I, Michael P. Collins, Village President of the Village of Plainfield, Will and Kendall Counties, Illinois, do hereby proclaim, proclaim the 17th of May as Poppy Day and ask all the citizens to pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy on this date and its witnessed 4th of May today. And the second one, the representative from the American Legion wasn't able to be here this evening. But the second one is, whereas public work services provided in our community are the integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas the support of the understanding and informed citizenry is vital to efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, and highways, public buildings. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public work officials. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel whose staff public work department is materially influenced by people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Michael P. Collins, President of the Village of Plainfield, do hereby proclaim the week of 17 through 23 as National Public Works Week in Plainfield. And I call upon all the citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions of public work officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, quality of life. I'll give this to Alan a little later. And I have one other comment. May 2nd and 3rd was the big serve here in town and in Plainfield Township. They, I'm going to have Mr. Murphy go through most of it. But I just want to thank Trustee Lamb, Trustee Benucci, Trustee Rasich, Village Administrator Murphy, of course, our chief, Public Works, Alan, of course, for coming out yesterday and spending their time. Even our chief judge, or excuse me, even, excuse me, misspoke. Not yet. Even our circuit judge was out there and actually dug a hole for trees and everything else. But also, I might include Community Christian Churches, of course, the Village of Plainfield, Plainfield United Methodist Church, Hope United Methodist Church, and other community organizations for coming out. There were 750 volunteers yesterday. So it was, it was quite large. Last year, we had 300, so you could see it droop by itself again. And I'll have Mr. Murphy comment a little bit farther about that.
Boy, I have very little else to say. You, you pretty much covered everything. But I do also want to say a special thank you to Commissioner, Police Commissioner Greg Chapman, who was also part of our organizing committee and was very actively involved from the beginning. Showing up on the screen actually are some pictures, just a small collection of pictures that we took from the events. We serviced over 24 different nonprofits in our community this past weekend. And as well, Alan Persons helped coordinate service to seven different houses that were in need throughout the community. You know, we, we did everything from going over to ready, set, ride and providing services to that program, to the Del Valle Head Start Program, to the various food pantries and the like through the community. There's Mr. Persons humping some gravel. He did a wonderful job, by the way. This event, the picture that was showing just back, the last one that was up just a moment ago, that, actually, we sewed stress blankets for Lyndon Oaks. And they made over 250 stress blankets to help out at Lyndon Oaks. And the other big project that I just wanted to mention quickly was the Forgotten Initiative. For families, for kids that are taken from their families through the courts, they basically leave their houses without anything on their backs. And we put together over 150 backpacks to be able to help those kids that are in need. And I really have to thank again, as Mayor Collins mentioned, I really do want to thank Mayor Collins, trustees Margie Benucci, Jim Rasich, and Bill Lamb. The Honorable Dan Rippey, Commissioner Greg Chapman, Chief Conapek, who was there all day long with me. Alan Persons, who suffered all day long with me, and actually longer than that. And he put up with a lot. Jim Harvey as well, has always made a great help with us as well with our River Suite project. I don't know, did we get a report on how many tons of material came out of the river on that day, Jim, by chance? I didn't get that report. But one of the pictures as well, you see, they just have a whole litany of materials that they've collected. So do you remember by chance?
I think somebody mentioned like 28 big, you know, hefty type bags of material that was gathered in relatively short time, so it was a great effort.
You know, we're really blessed to have 750 people choose to get involved and make a difference in our community. It really was absolutely fantastic. We, we were so thrilled when we kicked this off last year and thought with 300 people, we were doing fantastic. This year, it just morphed it. And I really am looking forward to what next year brings for us as well. We're, this is just a fantastic community event. It's great to see us actually going out into the community instead of just our, from our normal jobs and, and making a difference here in Plainfield and the area. So thank you very much.
That's all I have.
Looking for more trustee comments, I have a couple, if I don't mind.
I'm sorry, I don't read far enough sometimes.
I gotta live up to what Paul Fay says about me, I mean.
Yeah. Well, thanks for shaking over the chair. I'm also seeking board consideration of a motion to approve presidential appointment of Michael Paris to the Planning Commission with the term expiring April 30th, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich?
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
I would just say one other thing for the new trustees benefit. You have to talk into these mics, otherwise if you lean back or whatever, they can't understand. Thank you.
If you get a chance.
Trustees' comments?
A couple of quick comments. One, I don't usually comment on the proclamations, but the public works one I think is particularly important. There's a little phrase in there. Mayor is calling upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions to which public work officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. They operate so efficiently, you really don't know what they're doing. So Mike, I would encourage you, anybody who's listening, to really find out what goes on. Because supplying water is no easy thing, to get the leakage down so low is not easy. Keeping the sewage treatment plant running with five people and not having any concerns or complaints from the citizens, it's phenomenal. And so I would encourage people to spend some time getting to understand what happens, maybe consider giving tours because they're really fascinating. The other comment on the, on the big serve, I was roaming around, taking pictures this time. And it's amazing the dedication that was put in, from little kids to people who are probably in their 60s, baby 70s, busy digging up weeds. You know, they work steadily for several hours. And nobody complained, they, they had fun, they enjoyed it, they made a tremendous contribution. So the end result, I thought, was very impressive. And I think much better than even by, by last year. Because more people volunteered, more people were happy with what they did. Because more people volunteered, more people were happy with what they did. And I think the, the picnic at the end went over well, too. Food disappeared. The only comment I would make is our honorable judge almost got singed because he was busy there flipping hot dog, or hamburgers. And it turned out to be a hazardous job. I think he lost a few hairs on his forearm. Every once in a while, he'd, he'd wince, but it was hot.
Any other trustee comments?
Yes, I would like to make a comment. I'm sorry, I just wanted to thank the board members and the village president for the reappointment over the years to the Planning Commission that allowed me to serve for the 10 years that I was on there. And I'm grateful for the support of my family, friends, and the community for the election as trustee. And I look forward to continuing to serve our wonderful community. Thank you.
Are there any other trustee comments?
Margie?
I also would like to thank my friends, family, Mr. Mayor, Board of Trustees, Judge Rippey, for coming out tonight. And I look forward to serving you with dedication. I, I love this community and I intend to, to show you. Thank you.
Well, I just want to say welcome aboard, and Bill, welcome back. And as far, you know, the big serve was, was a great experience. And I would encourage anybody to, to consider that next time. And I've said this before, and I'll say this to students who are listening around the room, if you're a high school student and you're freshman, sophomore year, that's the time to start planning ahead for your community service. It's a very important and a noble gesture on your part. And believe you me, a lot of scholarships are judged as part of that as a big criteria. So you really want to consider that. But it's just a great time. And in another point of giving kudos to people who are, who are part of that, their organizations, the YMCA made donations to us, several businesses. And also, I want to thank Bob Smith. He's kind of an unsung hero there at Plainfield High School. He is asked many times to give up his school and rearrange schedules and do things to accommodate us for a variety of events. And they were very accommodating to us for this event. So I wanted to thank the school district, but particularly Bob Smith, who's kind of this quiet principal that people don't realize how much he really does. So, thank you.
Not to belabor the point of the big serve, but I do have to mention, you know, it's almost an impossibility to mention everyone's name. But we had an awful lot of tremendous sponsors for this event. Close to 900 to 1,000 people ate a luncheon in the late afternoon. And it was provided by an awful lot of people. Not only the workers, but it was also provided by community service groups. For example, the Community Christian Church, the Village of Plainfield, Plainfield United Methodist Church, Hope United Methodist Church, Peter Ruby Twist Yoga Lounge, Aerotech Design Labs, the Plainfield Lions, the Premier Custom Products, Aldi, First Community Bank, and Hopscotch and Vine. Those are just some groups that provided material goods, spiritual goods, to our particularly wonderful day. And I know this was the T-shirt that all, all volunteers received, the T-shirt said fashion. And on the very back of the T-shirt were the names of the sponsors. And if you ever see someone wearing a T-shirt that does say the big serve, say thank you to them because they really did a big service to the Village of Plainfield. One last thing on the big serve is Mr. Murphy is, together with a, our friend, what's his name?
Scott Patton?
Scott Patton will be putting together a particular program that will be presented in a week or two. It'll be a videotaped presentation showing more detail of what people did. And it'll be interesting as we did it last year. But the big serve was a tremendous success. One last thing. At the very beginning of our proclamation program, very beginning of this, Mayor Collins said something about Poppy Day proclamation. And oftentimes, you'll see individuals selling the little poppy that people put on their lapel or wear it. And it's used for veterans' benefits. I was, I looked at that proclamation today and there's, if any of you ever have an opportunity, there's a very famous poem that was written. I love history. And this poem, if you ever have an opportunity, the poem is entitled "In Flanders Field." And I looked at the date, and it was written by a lieutenant colonel whose friend died on May the 2nd, 1915, 100 years ago. And the title of the poem is "In Flanders Field." If you get an opportunity, I'm not going to read it, other than first, the introduction, which is so touching to me. "In Flanders Fields, the poppies blow between the crosses, row on row, that mark our place, and in the sky, the larks, still bravely singing, fly, scarce heard amid the guns below." And it goes on. It's one of the most touching poems you can ever read about veteran dedication. And like I say, it was done 100 years ago, May the 2nd. If you get an opportunity, look it up. You'll be very touched. And if you get an opportunity, buy a poppy. It's a valuable service. Thank you.
Are there any other trustee comments?
Just one, very short. I just want to welcome Trustee Lamb back to the board. Happy to serve with you again another term. Welcome back. And congratulate both of our newly elected trustees. I assure you, in a, in a good way, your lives will never be the same. And I look forward to serving with both of you. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? This would be the time for public comments. If there are no public comments, then we'll proceed with the business meeting. We're seeking a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich? Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Advisory Task Force on Economic Development. We're seeking Board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number 3212, amending the Advisory Task Force on Economic Development.
So moved.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
Just quickly, I, just for the audience's sake, if nothing else, we created the Advisory Task Force for Economic Development in 2010. And it's been a very active and worthwhile task force. And we've enjoyed the feedback that we've gotten from them. Sadly, Tim Stuttenfeld passed away. And also, tonight, Mike Paris has been, I don't know if it's promoted or demoted or just whatever, but Mike is leaving the task force to go to the Plan Commission. And he'll be a great asset over there. So we took this as a good opportunity to change the structure of the task force. It was an 11-member board. We're moving it to a seven-member board. It aligns a little bit more with the other boards that we have within the community and the like. And so that's really what's before you, is it changing that to a seven-member advisory board. As well, there is an amendment to, the mayor served as an ex officio. This now allows for him to put a designee in as an ex officio.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not the motion was made and seconded to adopt ordinance number 3212, amending the Advisory Task Force on Economic Development. Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich? Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. We're seeking Board consideration of a motion to approve the presidential appointments to the Advisory Task Force on Economic Development, as identified in the staff report.
So moved.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing non, I'll proceed with the roll. Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich?
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Vecquity LLC. We're seeking Board consideration of a motion to approve a site plan for a retail center located in a newly created outlot at the Kensington South Retail Center located at Route 59 and 127th Street.
So moved.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing non, I'll proceed with the roll. Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich?
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. We're seeking Board consideration of a motion to approve a final plat for a new 1.21 acre outlot at the Kensington South Retail Center located at Route 59 and 127th Street.
So moved.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
I believe that part of this comes back, if they want to drive through, it has to come back to the board, if I remember correctly.
That's correct.
So, it just fills in a hole on a parking lot. It's probably a nice addition, and hopefully they'll be very successful with it.
Are there any other comments or questions? Hearing non, I'll proceed with the roll. Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich?
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Cedar Lake American Homes. We're seeking Board consideration of a motion to approve a final plat for a new 14.6 acre lot at the Cedar Lake Development located at Van Dyke Road north of Fairfield Bridge.
So moved.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
I have a question, Michael. The report talks about assisted living. They're taking some of the existing building and making it assisted living?
Yes, that's correct. In the first phase, they are basically, were approximately 200 units in the first phase, which was actually constructed. They're taking a portion of those 200 units and converting those to assisted living, which is consistent with the original terms of the annexation agreement. So the developer's not proceeding with the second and the third phase of the senior apartments. That's specifically why they are subdividing this parcel.
They're not proposing that yet, though. That's what they intend to do.
That's correct.
Nothing's come to us on.
Exactly. They, they don't know what the, this new 14 acre site will contain. There is an annexation agreement, which basically limits any use of this property to basically either senior apartments or assisted living facilities or supportive living facilities. If they wanted to change that, they would have to come back to the board and amend the annexation agreement. So you'll have an opportunity to look at any type of new uses and also obviously look at any future site plan for this 14 acre site in the future.
Basically, trying to provide a full-service senior living area.
That's correct.
Expanding, which is, I think, very commendable. Keep it senior living, well, unless they try to annex it to something else, but it should be very nice.
They've identified a market for assisted living. And therefore, they're converting a portion of their building to assisted living.
Good, thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not the motion was made and seconded to approve a final plat for a new 14.6 acre lot at the Cedar Lake Development. Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich?
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Kensington Center South Sign Variance. We're seeking Board consideration of a motion to adopt the findings of fact of the Zoning Board of Appeals as the findings of fact of the Board of Trustees. And furthermore, to direct the village attorney to prepare an ordinance granting approval of a sign variance to permit three additional monument signs at the development commonly known as Kensington Center South, located at the southwest corner of Route 59 and 127th Street.
So moved.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
I have some concerns or comments, I guess I'd like to make. Having reviewed this at the Plan Commission level, my concern is, is that what the proposal is for the signs, the whole idea originally was to help the small shop space, which I think everybody agrees with. The challenge that I have is I'm not sure that the size of the sign and the panels allowed for the small shop space are actually going to accomplish what they're hoping for it to do. So in other words, there's three signs. The Chipotle, that's fine, it's small shop space. But the two other signs, the one for the Target and the small shop spaces kind of split on 127th and on Route 59. What I was hoping for was maybe, you know, as a consideration, the petitioner actually made a comment during the proposal to the Plan Commission was that Target wanted to be on the same level as Walmart. Walmart has a monument sign on 127th. My thought was, what if you added just the Target-only sign on 127th? That's proposed. And then the sign on Route 59 would be for small shop space only, which would allow less tenants, larger panels, which would help increase their visibility, which I believe is the intent. I think the way it's proposed today, while it's giving signage to the small shop space, it's not going to accomplish what they're hoping to do because the size of the sign is so small and the speed of traffic on Route 59, 45, 50 miles an hour. So that's, that's my concern. And I would just ask maybe if the board would consider going back and maybe speaking with Target or the other parties involved, the shopping center owner, and seeing maybe if there isn't a compromise that could be had to help the small shop space.
Trustee O'Rourke is absolutely right. It was a very fascinating discussion in front of the Plan Commission. I agree with him that the, these signs are not going to help the small shops as much as they should. But I also struggle with the fact that, I look at where Dominix has had stores, their shopping malls are disintegrating around them. So actually pushing the anchor for the, for the area is not necessarily a bad thing. I think we ought to, they ought to do what they can if, to emphasize the smaller ones. But as I recall, the developer who wants to do this, he's got his hands tied by Target. The agreement says Target controls. Target didn't want to do it, Target doesn't do it. Nobody else can. So I'm not sure what leverage we have. I would encourage them to make the, the small shops as big as they can, as Trustee O'Rourke is suggesting. The other thing I would do is, one of the, pick, one of the signs is obscured by landscaping. I know we love our landscaping, but if we're going to try to put in signs, maybe we ought to make sure the landscaping doesn't obscure part of the signs. And one of the pictures shows that. And maybe we ought to say, okay, you can take out that tree because signs are important. We want to have our businesses succeed. So I'm not overly happy with the fact that Target's on all the signs. But if you're pushing the, if people go to Target, they end up shopping at the other shops. I think that probably is a good thing. So on balance, I, I support going ahead, although I think Trustee O'Rourke has spelled it out very nicely that it's not the perfect solution, but their hands may be tied. So I guess I support doing this, but try to make some improvements and get the landscaping out of there if we can, so.
Do we know if we can go back and at least ask the question to the petitioner and/or Target?
Well, we've, I've had discussions with the applicant. The applicants actually here this, this evening, they can provide specific illumination on the very specific discussions they've had with Target. Based on my discussions with the applicant, it's my understanding that Target has preemption over all the signage on the Kensington South site. Therefore, they have not assented or consented at this point to allowing any of their signage to be removed from any of the existing signs. And the applicant's actually here this evening to outline that, those specific discussions.
I'm sorry, maybe I didn't come, I'm not, I guess what I'm trying to, to ask for, consider, if somebody would look at it, is I'm not trying to take away from Target. I'm actually, I think, ask, asking maybe to consider what they've asked for, which was, originally was to be on equal footing with Walmart. And that would be their own dedicated monument on 127th Street, which would give the anchor the prime visibility, but then not be on, and they already have a sign on Route 59 already. So alls I'm saying is the other second sign would be shared between only the small shop space.
Yeah, and maybe perhaps it might make sense for the applicant to actually come up here and just again provide an outline specifically of the discussions they've had with Target with respect to that request.
Could you make sure your mic's on and identify yourself, please?
Test. Ramsey Hassan with Edwards Realty Company, owner and manager of Kensington Center. We've had several discussions with Target over the last year and a half for our ability to give our small shop tenants some more visibility on Route 59. Unfortunately, the parcel that we need to locate this new monument sign on Route 59, Target owns. And not only do they control the leverage with the Operation Easement Agreement of the center, they control the land. So basically, for, we've had these discussions on the sign for the last year and a half of what it could look like. The previous two years before that, it was a nonstarter in discussions. We were turned away. We do own the, the site on 127th Street, which, you know, we are allowing Target to put, to put their sign. But they, they will not get approval at their real estate committee level for any sign on their land that they are not on. That was a, they made it clear it was a nonstarter from the beginning. So although we believe that this may not be the perfect solution either, we feel that it is better than, than no solution or not moving forward on this.
I guess, can I ask a question for clarity then? So if you own 127th Street, why do you need to put Target on that if, if they're not willing to do on the other side?
To them, it was either both or nothing. So we don't have the ability to move ahead with just a sign on Route 59. And they also do not, we do not have the ability for an even, you know, so-called horse trade, where we go on your land, you go on ours, that, that's also a nonstarter.
I mean, that seems I mean, that seems to me how most things get done is through compromise, that's all. And maybe we could be the bad guys.
I've tried to make you the bad guys.
The consensus of your small business owners, are they for this plan? They are, to have their?
They, you know, over the, and I'll give you some history. Over the years, although we have stayed relatively high occupancy besides one significant one in the Barnes and Noble, it has been a struggle through the recession. We've been able to retain these tenants through a series of rent reductions, short-term lease extensions, other accommodations in that we participate now in the marketing. We spend a considerable amount of money on mailers and, and other things just to support some of these tenants, the small tenants especially. And, you know, time and time again, it has come back that they need more visibility on Route 59. We see that, you know, this is, over the last 18 months or so of going back and forth with sign companies, with Target's representatives, our own design criteria, we, we feel that this is a, a hard-fought solution that.
So this, this is the small businesses and your land management pushing this, not Target pushing this?
No, correct. This is, this is, this is us pushing this proposal. Target is, you know, if it were up to them, they, I think the status quo would be okay. But the comment they made to me is to, I had the same, you know, comments as you did. Why do you need to be on 127th as well? And, you know, they have a competitor across the street with a, with a monument sign. And, you know, they, they have also struggled through the recession. They've shut down all their operations in Canada. So it's, you know, it's also trying to preserve their sales in the area, maybe as much as not, not trying to grow them, but preserve what they have to continue in operation. And if I could add one more thing, you know, we are considering trying to get some of the tenants, maybe the Dress Barn and Maurice's that are already represented on some signs, maybe off of this panel on Route 59 and make, you know, some of the smaller tenants that aren't represented a little bit bigger to adhere to your concerns as we have the same ones. If a panel's only a foot and people are driving by at 40, 50 miles an hour down Route 59, how effective can it be? We're trying to make it as effective as possible. But we also are bound by lease agreements and an operation and easement agreement with the other parcel owners.
If in fact they were the case, so the other ones shrink, does that not mean that Target won't get larger?
Target will not get larger, no. Only our side will be able to get larger.
A lot of the points were brought up by Trustee O'Rourke as well as Trustee Lamb. I'm glad you were present tonight to answer questions. I guess essentially where I'm at is when I make a decision about, you know, a topic like this, I look at, you know, is it going to cause a safety hazard? Is it going to create unfair competition with other properties? And so far, no, I'm, I'm okay with it. Whether I think it's the best marketing strategy for you or not, I don't think that's going to change the way I vote. That's up to you to make it succeed or not. It's not up to the government to say, we think it might be a better marketing strategy for you to change this color or change, you know, that, make this slightly larger here or there. And you're essentially bound by some of the constraints that Target's putting on you. So, I mean, I'm going to support, you know, this proposal tonight. And, you know, again, that's essentially where I'm coming to my decision. But thanks for being here. It actually was helpful to have you here tonight and not sure how the other trustees felt their vote may have gone if you were or weren't here, but it really meant a lot to me to have you here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not the motion was made and seconded to adopt the findings of fact of the Zoning Board of Appeals as the findings of fact of the Board of Trustees and to direct the village attorney to prepare an ordinance granting approval of a sign variance to permit three additional monument signs at the development commonly known as Kensington Center South. Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
No.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich? Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Thank you that, that motion carries. Administrators' report?
None tonight.
Management Services' report?
No report.
Engineers' report?
No report.
Planning Department' report? Building Department' report?
No report.
Public Works' report?
Very briefly, on a beautiful day like today, we wouldn't normally think about salt or snow or things like that, but we know this is Illinois and weather could change at any time. So I wanted to give a little brief history as to the salt purchase that the village has undertaken in the past. And up until last year, for the past 25 years, with the exception of last year, the village has participated in the state purchase program for salt. And in essence, I want to clarify what the state purchase program consists of is it's very similar to the state purchase bid that the state receives for things like a Ford pickup truck. The state doesn't actually build Ford pickup trucks. They don't buy them and resell them. They link up buyers with Ford Motor Company or dealerships to sell trucks. So that's in essence how it happens. And up until last year, it, it actually functioned very, very well. And the village has been pleased with their participation with the state in the past. But last year, in an effort to link up suppliers and the really two big suppliers within the state, there's some others too as well, there were several communities that were not picked up by the state purchase program and we were one of the communities that was not picked up by the program. So last year, we had to go out to the market and receive our own bids and then award a bid and, and find a supplier for this salt too as well. In the process, Midwest Salt was the individual that provided the lowest bid for the village and they were to provide 3,000 tons of salt. In the process, since the loads were of different sizes, they were making deliveries to Plainfield, also selling to Shorewood and Oswego too as well. They delivered over 150 truckloads of salt. But after the certified load tickets were tabulated, they had actually delivered an additional 345 tons and some change at that time in November. We had agreed with the company that we would work it out in the future. Of course, they offered to sell it at $107 a ton and I told them that we were not interested in purchasing the additional 345 tons and we agreed to work this out in the future. Since then, we've continued our discussions with Midwest Salt. Since then, Naperville recently opened a bid, this was last month, for 10,000 tons of salt. And they were surprised that it was a little higher than they had anticipated because this is typically, we would typically buy 3,000 to 4,000 tons of salt and Naperville would buy 10,000 to 15,000 tons of salt. But there, they had three bidders. Morden Salt came in at $123 per ton. Cargill was at $98 per ton. And Compass Mineral was at $85 per ton. We wanted to kind of verify the price and we went out and we talked to Cargill and had gotten a price at $89.66 per ton for salt purchase. And then we communicated with Midwest Salt again stating that we believe that the going rate for salt today is about $85 a ton. Typically, salt is cheaper in the spring and the summer, aside from the state purchase program, which has worked very well in the past, up, up until again last year. So the company has conceded to selling the salt at $85 a ton if the village is interested in buying it. Their only reservation is that we make a decision within this month based on the fact that I anticipate they'll be one of the companies within the state purchase bid program or at that point they'll resell it to another neighboring community. There is some savings for the village because it's already here, some, a little bit of savings for the company because they don't have to reload and retransport the salt too as well. So we see it as a good value and we see it as the lowest going rate at, at this point. So that's one item I wanted to mention about salt. The, the second item, so we take this into consideration as well. When we, we were looking towards the next season and trying to find the best value and supply for the village again, we did reach out to the Will County Governmental League to talk about forming a coalition in the area, consortium in the area to purchase salt for the major communities or most of the communities and county within Will County. And they were very receptive to that. Although we did a survey and of the first individual that we had checked with was Will County, they're a large purchaser. They purchased about 15,000 tons of salt. They had stated that they are returning to the state purchase program this year, although they were passed over last year. We reached out to Kendall County. They're one of the second largest in the area. They are returning to the state purchase program as well. And we reached out to the city of Joliet and they are returning to the state purchase program as well. They have confidence in the state. There are some contracts that help level the playing field this year. The state has pledged to go out for bid earlier than they did last year. And if you recall, we did have two rounds of bids. So Will County Governmental League, what I'm getting at, was not interested in forwarding a program, believing that partnering medium to small-sized communities would not provide the scale of savings that you would see normally through the state purchase program. And based on the bids that Naperville at 10,000 tons of salt had gotten, that they, they didn't believe that they'd see this type of savings, that it'd even potentially be higher. So the village has made a request to be part of the state program, at least for the first round. And that, of course, that would have to go back to the board for concurrence too as well. But to go back to the state for the first round, which should occur next month. And then as you recall, last year, we were in the first round. We opted to stay in into the second round. We would definitely evaluate if we got passed on the first round, evaluate what we'd want to do and go out for bids if that were to occur this year. Keep in mind, again, the state, in other states, they do purchase the salt and they redistribute it to the other communities. It doesn't work that way in the state Illinois. They just match up the suppliers with the individual communities. So with that, purchasing this additional salt at today's rate, and I know this is a little like gasoline in a way. The gas prices could go up by a dollar six months from now. They could go down by 25 cents six months from now. No one could really tell you accurately. But based on the fact that this is the lowest going rate and the supplier is willing to sell it, staff is recommending that we retain and, and purchase the salt here that's currently on site and that will keep the board apprised as to the situations with the salt as we move forward. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Think it makes sense to purchase stuff that's already here at a price that seems to be reasonable, so that argument is good. How much are we going to need additional to purchase for the, as you anticipate? Do you have a quantity in mind?
It'll be approximately 3, 3,000 to 3,500 tons. We currently have, including this amount, we have about 600 tons on site right now, which is a good number to have at the end of the year. You, you never know in March if you're going to have a freezing rain event where you really need the salt. So this will give us a good head start for next year.
Thank you.
Lee, in years past, we, we tend to fall right at about 4,500 tons, right Alan?
I would like to move to approve the purchase of 345.11 tons of road salt from Midwest Salt at a discount rate totaling $29,334.35.
Seconded.
The motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich?
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Thank you that motion carries.
And the last item that I have is just more of a housekeeping item. As the board members and, and the new board members are most likely aware too as well, our purchasing authority at the staff level, the limit is $5,000, but emergencies can and do arise. When they do arise, we communicate these items internally and along to the mayor too as well. We take the appropriate action, prudent action in emergencies. But ultimately, any purchases above the 5,000 that are non-contractual have to come back to the village board for approval. We did have a backhoe that we utilized to repair water and sewer mains that had lost a major hydraulic pump. We sent it to the factory authorized dealer in the area. They completed the repair. It was slightly over the $5,000. Actually, it totaled $6,670.34 and we're just seeking concurrence from the board on payment of this invoice.
So moved. Seconded.
Motion was made and seconded to approve payments to West Side Specialized Services Company in the amount of $6,670.34 for the emergency repair to the 2001 John Deere backhoe. Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck? Trustee Rasich?
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Thank you that motion carries. Police chief's report?
I have no report, thank you.
Attorney's report?
No report, thank you.
Reminders?
I have one quick comment referring, I know, but referring to what I said at the beginning about new trustees, speaking to what Paul Faye said. Glad to see new trustees do talk. Thanks, thank you very much. You're welcome.
Care for what you wish for.
I know, he got, yeah.
Maybe you'll ground out some, never mind, we'll, we won't get into that right now. On May 5th is the next Planning Commission meeting. On May 11th is the next Committee of the Hall. Coffee with the mayor will be the 13th. May 14th is HPC and our next regular board meeting will be on the 18th.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you that motion carries.